Ready to roll? Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. Can you hear us all right out there? Are we live? Okay. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milligan?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Here.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty here.
Secretary Hatcher?
Hatcher here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Lando?
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Worten?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We have an agenda before us for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve that agenda, please?
So moved.
Support, DeBarty.
And support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The agenda stands approved. Thank you. In our Tab A, Approval of the Minutes, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the March 22nd, 2022 annual retreat and monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Some more support.
And support. Thank you very much. The minutes stand approved. Citizen participation, verbal communications. The WCC Education Association, I believe, is in the House, and Ms. Kissel is coming forward to share some of her thinking with us.
I don't trip over anything on my way back.
Yes, be careful, please. We don't want any of those incidents.
It is April 2022. At the end of every term, especially winter term, excitement is mixed with the exhaustion. Many of us look to the new spring and summer routines. As the grading and advising stresses change, a new list of things to do stretches out in front of us. For many, we will begin the process of evaluating our courses. In a few minutes, you will have the pleasure to hear from two of our finest on campus, Randy Van Wagenen and Sean Darin, our Curriculum and Assessment Chairs. I won't steal their thunder, but I do want to note that their efforts and those of the many committee members, both past and present, are so very appreciated. Having worked through the curriculum assessment process for two courses this past year, their leadership and guidance have been most beneficial. As I noted last month, there is one grievance in the queue. That grievance has been denied, and the WCC EA will be filing for arbitration shortly. As the arbitration process moves forward, the WCC EA will remain open to discussions so that we can work to create sustainable practices for this campus. Last week, Jason Withrow, the WCC EA's chief negotiator, met with VP Swick to discuss the upcoming negotiations, and we are hoping for a date to begin as early as next week. The WCC EA is looking forward to a productive negotiation. Also, a few weeks ago, there was a celebration of those set to retire or who have recently retired, and it was such a joy to spend time together in celebration. But like many things now, that celebration also came with this sense of surrealness that we must all navigate as we reestablish our workplace routines and continued health concerns. This feeling was also evident at the Washtenaw Literacy Brunch held on Saturday, April 23rd. It was wonderful to see Trustee DeBarty at this event, and we were lucky to connect with so many in our community. In particular, Naomi Norman, the superintendent of the Washtenaw Intermediate School District, reminded the audience of the ripples that individuals and institutions can make in this community and how true this is. For many of us during this pandemic, we've been trying to protect as much of our world as we can, and now we're beginning the arduous task of settling into our new place and our new roles. Considering this, what WCC has done, is doing, and will continue to do, will certainly ripple throughout the community. Our work in and out of the classrooms, across campus, and in local businesses cannot be understated, and it continues to be such a privilege to represent the WCCA membership. In an effort to find some levity and joy during this hectic time of year, the WCCA would like to invite the Board to join faculty and staff on campus Monday, May 2nd, from between 1:00 to 3:00, when the Kona Ice Truck will be set up by the GM Bridge in campus green. This will be a great chance to create your own flavored ice, and it will be a perfect time to meet and chat with those whose efforts create our community college. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments this evening? Seeing none. Written communications. Vanessa, anything that was directed to us?
None that was received, but we did get something through the Financial Aid Office, which I included in your folder.
Thank you. Special reports. Curriculum and Assessment Report, EVP Hearns is going to report to us.
Well, I get to stand here and introduce our Curriculum and Assessment Chairs, Randy Van Wagenen and Sean Darin, but I would like one point of privilege as they come up here and talk about all the hard work that the faculty have done with assessment. There has been one consistent thread in my time at Washtenaw Community College who has been very helpful in us moving the needle on assessment work. She has been a constant as offices and people and faculty come and go, and that is Joy Garrett, and we want to say thank you to her as this is her last board meeting. She will be retiring in the next month. So, thank you, Joy.
We're glad to be able to send you off. Thank you very much.
Well, hello, everybody. We first like to thank you for your time to give you an update on curriculum assessment. I'm Sean Darin, the Chair of the Assessment Committee, and I'd like to introduce you to Randy Van Wagenen, who is the Chair of the Curriculum Committee.
All right. We're going to do a quick rundown of what it is we do over there. We have two committees comprised of faculty from every division, administrators, we have our curriculum director, and everything that we do are aided by the Curriculum Office.
Usually, curriculum assessment issues are the number-one barrier nationwide for accreditation and reaccreditation or affirmation or reaffirmation. We know this. We know this in 1999. We ran into those same issues and those concerns. But since then, institutional and cultural changes helped facilitate and encourage curriculum assessment work, and we know in 2009 and 2019, those practices deemed satisfactory by the HLC, and no concerns were identified.
So, beyond just satisfactory, I'd like to talk about some of our accomplishments and things that we're doing right. We have a relatively high rate of curriculum and assessment work completed across the institution. We have instituted a collaborative approach, and this sort of reaches out into, you know, we're happy to answer questions about this, but this reaches out across the entire college unusually compared to some of our peer institutions. Both our committees work together. This isn't a separate thing. We do a lot of, you know, a lot of direct outreach to faculty. The college and our committees have designated a huge amount of resources that we train and aid faculty in doing this. In fact, you know, we've been identified as a model for other institutions. Just this year, we were asked to present to HLC, to our accrediting body, and the topic of Joy's presentation was supporting faculty engagement in assessing student learning, some of the neat things that we're doing here.
So, the process reform. Lisa and I discussed, I believe, with the Board of Trustees, the process that we instituted because of the things going on in the world for the last couple of years. It's been very successful. It increased the efficiency while increasing our level of quality, which is, again, where we're going. The asynchronous portion of the process allows for more time for questions, comments, and discussions between the committee members, which is great. That in lieu reduces the time that documents take to circulate, so feedback getting back from faculty, back to the Curriculum Assessment Office, back to the committees, back to the chairs. Things happen a little bit quicker on that end. So, it gives us more time to identify potential roadblocks and work with faculty. Increased collegiality by encouraging collaborative processes. Again, curriculum assessment committees are a different committee now, I feel, totally different than when I first went to committee. We're more, you know, inviting to faculty to come, and they participate more willingly to actually get the work done that they know they need to get done. We've identified a number of agenda items that we could effectively process while monitoring high standards on a weekly basis, so it allows us to take our avalanche that we normally get on a two-year basis and average it out through the whole semester, so we can actually get everything done and nothing's held up for our students.
So, what's the results of these reforms that we've put in, apart from being more efficient, you know, what this looks like, a 53% increase, program changes, and this is just for the winter semester of 2022, 550% increase in program discontinuations, 600 increase, 600% increase in assessment plans. This last one's fairly remarkable. When I started on the Assessment Committee eight or nine years ago, I looked at the data, and I believe we had 52 course assessment reports for the entire year. We got 76 between June and August, and all of those have been processed and cleared at this point.
So, our support in working with the faculty, we've had eight in-service sessions offered over the fall semester and winter semester, 146 faculty attendees. Randy and I host drop-in work sessions. 28 of those offered for the last two semesters, we've been able to help out, you know, 106 faculty attendees there, and of these 24 sessions we have hosted by the committee chairs, Randy and I, we've been able to help 71 faculty members.
And like Sean said, yeah, we're doing those drop-in sessions. We've kind of changed the way that we do those because of everything going on, so we're using what we're calling a high-flex model, which means we're in campus, we're on campus, we're in person, we're inviting people into the rotating series of rooms from week to week, but also we simultaneously run our stuff on Zoom, and so we've had really good attendance, really good success for that. You know, and some of the benefits there, it's a regular venue for curriculum assessment work for faculty to do with other faculty, and we feel like it's helped ease some of the burden during the actual committee meetings and hopefully on the Curriculum Assessment Office by kind of dealing with hurdles up front rather than waiting until it hits the meeting and we're voting on it and discussing it. We can iron some of that out ahead of time. Yes, sir.
I've got a question on both the in-service sessions, drop-in work sessions, and these Friday sessions. Are these for full-time adjunct, part-time? Is it across the board or so all faculty even part-time?
Anybody that's working on this stuff is welcome.
Anybody that wants to.
And we're tackling, I mean, we're tackling all kinds of questions in there about all sorts of things, you know, anybody that's struggling with this process, because it can be a little bit confusing and intimidating, I think, a lot of times trying to get this stuff to go through, and we're helping them with anything that comes along.
I'm curious, how many part-time faculty actually participate in these?
I don't think we have those exact numbers, but we're more than welcome to show them the process, because it's just more than...
What'd you say, like, but there are some?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, do we do examples here or...? No, okay. Yeah, there have been some, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
It's tough when Randy and I get together and we start talking about curriculum assessment.
Yeah, we could take your whole night.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
What's the contractual obligation for full-time faculty to participate in curriculum and assessment?
Beyond committee work, every two years, full-time faculty have to submit a master syllabus update and a assessment report on a course.
One quarter.
Correct. And getting beyond that and offering the sessions like we do, some of these sessions, mind you, will range from an hour to three hours. Typically, the Friday sessions offer us three hours to do that, so a faculty member could actually come down and complete some of the work in one session, which makes it a little bit easier. They see the ease of it, and then, of course, they're encouraged to do more after that because the whole idea is to catch up.
Any other questions?
Finish that one. Okay.
All right, last one. So, our goals. We've made huge strides in course and general education assessment at that level. So, we want to build on that process. So, moving forward, we're going to apply all that momentum towards program assessment. That's the next piece that's there. And again, we could talk about curriculum assessment all night long and talk about embedding and building from the course level. We want to also better identify alignments between course assessments through program assessment and effects on general education assessment, program review, et cetera. Again, it's building blocks as we go through assessment at the course level. Yes?
What's the state of program review as opposed to course review?
Okay. So, course assessment, we have a three-year cycle on our courses to assess the courses and to update the master syllabus for the courses. For program review, or I should say program assessment, we have a four-year cycle on that. Program review, which is a totally different topic or a different task that we do, it's every two years, and it's an opposite every two years from general education assessment, and we staggered it like that. So, next year coming up, we should see our general education assessment, which I'm super proud of, the group that's over there and doing that. That's one of the things that kind of fell by the wayside, and I believe the last two cycles, so we're talking 2020-21 and the two years previous to that. We're finally back on track with that. I was trying to pick that up. I'm not sure if I answered your question or not.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
May I say?
President Blakka.
Yes, I'd like to thank you both, and I'd like to thank the committee members that worked with you and the faculty. As teachers, we all know how important curriculum and assessment is. It's what keeps what we're teaching fresh and applicable to the real world and to the expectations of the world. And assessment really helps us know if we're teaching and people are learning in the way we're teaching. So, those are so critical, and yes, you've really inspired a lot of people to do this work, and by just hearing you say that, you guys just love talking about it. I've never heard that before. That's really impressive.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
For the record, Randy and I would also like to state that the previous committees and our current committee, we're very, very proud of. Lot of good focus, a lot of hard work, a lot of hard-working folks that are there. It takes a lot of time to do this work and care about it. I feel, and we both feel, that the culture's totally shifted at Washtenaw to really get our mindset around this and push forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Randy. WTMC update. Dean Carl Covert has some thoughts to share with us.
Well, it's great to be back. The last time I got to talk with the Board was 2019, and then we had kind of a two-year adventure, and so now I'm glad to be back and be able to share with something that I'm incredibly proud of, the work that we've done. If you look at our logo, it says 1997 on our new logo, so just to let you know, next year is our 25th anniversary. And WTMC is the second-oldest middle college in Michigan, and we are by far the largest middle college and the most successful. So, I'm going to get to share some of that data with you. So, first of all, there's a couple myths that I always hear out in the community, and I want to make sure that we address these. We are not selective. Any student in Washtenaw County can come to us, special education students, students that come from any part of the county. We actually draw currently from five different counties because of siblings that have started in the school before, and if you are a sibling in our school, you have automatic admission because of transportation. This is some data of our incoming students. About 10% of our incoming students over the last five years have been at the reading level or one or two on the Accuplacer, which places them reading somewhere between the third and fifth grade level. The next two data points are really important to us. About nine years ago, we looked at our data on math, and only 1% of our college classes were actually math classes. And if you look at our data of the students coming in, 60% of them who are coming in as either ninth, 10th, or 11th graders aren't ready or prepared to do Algebra I, and 10% of them are not prepared to do pre-algebra. All of these students must pass a college math class, and all of them graduate from WTMC with the math requirement to finish a bachelor's degree at Eastern, Central. They've all completed that by the time they leave our program. 9% of our students currently have IEPs, so they're special education students. 50% identify as first-generation college students, which is really important to us because that's a big part of our mission. And 33% are eligible for free and reduced lunch. If you look at the larger high schools in Washtenaw County, that puts us as the third-highest for free and reduced. When we include the smaller schools like Y High, we're not as high as them, but when you look at larger high schools in the area, we have one of the highest free and reduced. And one of the magic of my staff comes from this next staff. We don't control where our kids come from, so the 220 kids next year coming in will come from over 100 different educational experiences, from homeschool, charter schools, private schools, public schools, and so we don't control the curriculum, but we get them all to the same place. And that's the amazing thing of the WTMC staff. The next thing is that we're subsidized by WCC. This amount, the $2.1 million that WCC gets through tuition, through our 3% chartering agreement, our license agreement, a lab aid that we spend, has increased by $100,000 every year over the last five years. That 3% chartering fee five years ago was $86,000, and next year it'll be $230,000, just for that 3%. All of our students are also WCC students, yet we provide a lot of services for them. So, we provide their advising services, we provide counseling services. I have two counselors and a social worker on staff. We provide their career development. We provide internships and job shadows for them, and all of that is provided for actually full-time WCC students but by WTMC staff. Just some attributes, that students can come in at ninth, 10th, or 11th grade. All of them have to transition to WCC because they have to finish a certificate or an associate degree, and to do that, there are three things that are essential for them to do. If they don't complete one of these three things, they won't transition to WCC, so they have to get the Accuplacer of reading and writing Level 6. They have to show effective soft skills in all their WTMC classes, which I'll talk about in a minute, and then they have to have an A or a high B showing they have content knowledge. Our soft-skill curriculum is something that was developed by Annie Broderick, who retired two years ago, and she did it through a federal grant, and we give it out to people if they want it. We've moved from a five-week curriculum to a six-week curriculum. It's integrated and taught for 20 to 30 minutes during every class, so they get anywhere from an hour to two hours of soft-skill instruction during the first six weeks, and you can see what those are. It's attendance, follow-through, preparation, communication, responsibility, and the new one we have is resilience. And resilience becomes that real important ability to kind of pick yourself up and come back and try again. So, we teach those skills, then the students are graded on them in their WTMC classes, and then they have to show excellent soft skills in those six areas before they move into WCC classes. We've shared that actually with Ypsilanti Community Schools, and they use that as a basis of their bridge program, getting students ready to come to WCC. WTMC curriculum, every one of our students has to complete a core kind of high school content area with WTMC, and then they transition and they have to finish either a certificate or associate degree at the college. This includes every one of our students has to finish English 111 and a literature course, PLS, and another social science, two WCC science courses, and one WCC math course. 85% of our students over the last five years have completed an associate degree. 31% have completed multiple degrees. We have kids who complete two and three associate degrees. And then the average credit that each of our student leaves with is 67 transferable credits. That is an amazing economic advantage for Washtenaw County, that students are leaving with free education. They can go out into the world of work, or they can go to EMU, or they can go to U of M, and they don't have the debt or burden. That compares, if you look at the national middle college, it's about 31 credits, and the state is 36. What I always like to say is those numbers include WTMC, so they would actually be slightly less if we weren't part of that data source. COVID response, we've been open for the last two years, and we couldn't have done it, especially last year, without Bill Johnson, Todd Robinson, Holly Herman. They were instrumental in the ability for us to stay open. And so, we offered our classes online, but we had students who had poor access to the Internet, had home that didn't allow them to do the work, or was too busy for them, parents who couldn't watch their students, or students that needed extra help. So, working with the college, we set up learning labs that were open all last year, and we were able to help our special ed kids, kids that needed extra need, and help them continue both in college and WTMC courses. Then last spring, a year ago in May, we opened up back with classes, and we did social distancing in the spring, and we had classes of 12 to 14 students on campus. And then this fall, we opened up, 95% of our classes were back on campus with no social distancing, with masking, and then this winter, 100% of WTMC classes were back on campus. We saw no examples of spread within the community, and my teachers have been back and loving it on campus. So, it's been a great thing, and we could not have done that without the support and help of WCC. And if you read and look at what is being said, the importance of being in person because of the mental health support that students need, this is a vital thing, and we are able to support students, put our eyes on students, and make sure that they're, not only their academic needs are being taken care of, their social and emotional needs are being taken care of. Just some statistics, we make up about 3% of the credit students, so 611 of 18,000. Over the last 10 years, we've actually decreased in the amount of dual-enrolled students. So, over 10 years, the school increased from 300 students to about 750, 770 students, but as we increased, because dual enrollment is what's going on in the state because of laws and things, we actually became a smaller amount of the high school students on campus. As we doubled inside, we actually became less than 50% of the high school students on campus. Those 3% are 5% of course enrollments and 6% of the credit hours. So, it's a pretty significant part when you look at credit hours, but I think the last statistics are really important. Of those 3% students, they make up 5% of the certificate and 8% of the associate degrees earned on campus. Oops. So, there are a couple areas where our students really excel, and one of them is in general studies and math and science associate degrees. WTMC students last year made up 45% of all the students who earn that degree. We make up 6% of the liberal arts transfer and 12% of the health program preparation associate degree. And then there's certain classes, or these are some of the, where degrees awarded, so 2% of advanced technology. I think the last one is really important, where 30% of math, science, and engineering tech in that field. So, our students are making up a huge portion of the students who are choosing degrees in science and math backgrounds. And then certain courses, we have a lot of students in them. We're 20% of Physics 105. In math, if you look at the next section there, we're anywhere from 20 to 40% of the enrollments in certain math courses. In bio, we're 16% of Bio 101. In bio, we're 16% of Bio 101, 15% of Chem 101. And then you can see in certain English courses, we make up a significant amount of those enrollments. Also in Spanish, 111 and 122. So W T M C has a pretty amazing record. At W C C, it's been a really great relationship, and W T M C students have a 95% success rate, meaning they earn a C or higher in their W C C courses. And that compares to a 78% success rate overall for the W C C population. And again, that 78% includes those W T M C students. And one of the things that I am proud for our school, we retain students who come. So you have to think, students are coming, reading at the third to fifth grade level, unable to do pre-algebra, needing numeracy. And those students are not only staying, but they're thriving. And they're moving on and getting certificates and degrees and moving out into our community with the ability to get a job, the ability to go on to a four-year school. And I think that's one of the things that I'm proudest of as an educator at W T M C. So thank you for contributing to our success. And, you know, without the partnership, without the support, both during COVID, without the faculty at W C C who educate over half of our kids in their classes, without the support of the administration, we wouldn't be able to do what we're able to do at W T M C. So thank you.
Any questions? Trustee Hatcher.
There's a lot to be proud of with W T M C, and I spend a lot of my time bragging about it in the community, even though I'm not part of your team. Remarkable success, and I appreciate your ability to work with the college. I have questions about when you have needs or concerns relevant to W C C, for instance, with instructors, or rooms, or health and safety. What is your access to the W C C administration and process? Do you start at the top, or do you go to specific, depending on the subject? How do you interact with that?
So our point of contact as part of the contract, I usually work with Linda Blakie if there's a concern that is a student concern, a discipline concern. If there is an academic concern, I usually will reach out to Kim Hearns around that. And also, we have, just like the college, we have a success coach. So we hired a success coach this year. And what my base advisors do, if they're concerned about one of their students and how that student might be doing in a W C C class, the base advisor asks our success coach to reach out to the faculty and find out how that student is doing. Oftentimes, when a student begins to struggle in a class, that may be the catalyst. So oftentimes, we'll bring that student in, and we find out that their parents have lost a job, or someone in the family has been diagnosed with an illness, or there is other things going on. So our ability to quickly find out when students begin to struggle and wrap resources around that student is so important. So our success coach will reach out directly to the faculty to get input on how students that we are concerned about. They're not showing up to their base meetings, they're not following through on emails that have been sent out, or they just struggled academically the previous semester, and we're checking that that's not a prolonged situation.
Do the faculty, all of their faculty, have permission to talk to the students and the parents?
Yep. So every student, when they come in, as part of their enrollment pack, signs a form that both the student and parents sign, saying they give the faculty, it's something that's been here since the very beginning. This ability for us, and it talks about FERPA, but it's our ability for us to get information so that we can help and support students.
What if you need something changed in facilities? Do you go to facilities, or do you go to the president, or?
Typically, I'll ask either Linda, or I'll talk to Holly if we need something.
Okay. Linda seems to be your.
Yeah, by contract, that's our person at the college.
Yeah, I didn't see it in the contract, but I'll read it again. Thank you very much.
Other questions from trustees?
I just want to say, real quick, Mr. Chair, Mr. Carl. Thank you. I am so excited and happy to hear your reports every time. As you know, I was on the board when this first was brought up many years ago, and it's just grown beyond my imagination of where it started and where it is at now. Thank you so much for being at the helm of this wonderful program. I like, my colleague, I talk about this program all the time, and besides the college. This is a wonderful opportunity for parents to understand what is the future for their child. It's none whatsoever can compare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, thanks again, Carl, for your presentation. When Ruth asked that question, I had to laugh a little bit. Carl is not shy about advocating for W T M C. And not only is he not shy, he's been here now for a really long time. So he pretty much knows everybody there is to know to get things done if he needs something to be done. So, you know, he is an amazing advocate for the school. He is an amazing advocate for his students. He's a phenomenal teacher, he's a phenomenal mentor, and I'm privileged to call him my friend.
You're not shy either.
And, you know, for me, this has been such a privilege. You know, this has been a wonderful 13 years of my educational trajectory, and I'm looking forward to the next bit and continuing this work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, Dean Covert. Thank you. Monthly reports, we have an action item in front of us tonight for personnel recommendation, Tab B in your agenda. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear such a motion?
To move.
And support. Is there any discussion? Trustee Hatcher, please.
I just like to say a few words about hiring a non-clinical case manager, someone whose particular specialty is in mental health. I think that's a wonderful addition for our counseling staff. But I would notice that this person is not a licensed counselor, and she, this person is a therapist, and it doesn't mitigate the need for more counselors at the college. So I would just hope that calling her a counselor is a bit deceptive, is all I'm saying. Or, not deceptive, but a little bit, I don't know the word, but it's not, she's not a counselor. She's a social worker and a therapist, and I think that we need this person. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying this person is not a counselor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Yes. I would just like to give a shout out to Terry Stoddard, Mechanical Systems Technician with 21 years of service. And I thought there was another in here.
Sukhiana Jett.
Yeah, Sukhiana Jett, 30 years, and directive emissions. I would say wish them a bunch of good luck to them in their future, and have fun.
Well said. We have a motion in front of us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to financial reports, Tab C in our packet tonight. And before we vote on the financial reports, VP Barnes, is there anything that you'd like to share with us here?
Yes, I'll hit a few highlights for you for the month of March. So the fall and winter tuition is pretty much fixed at this time of year, but the spring tuition, I wanted to highlight, is very much on track. So we're expecting the spring/summer semester at this point to meet or exceed our budget numbers. And the student fees also, that number should be a good number for the year. So we're expecting our total tuition and fees to exceed our budget.
Could you get a little closer to that microphone for us?
I'm sorry? Okay. So I'm expecting the total tuition and fees to exceed our budget by a couple of hundred thousand dollars for the year. I won't belabor the other revenue items, I've talked about them in the past. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but those are still on track, as I've said the last few months. But in total, our revenues should exceed our budget by a couple of million dollars still. In terms of expenditures, again, the explanations are similar. We do have some vacancies that are over and above the budget. There is some timing, there is some spending going to happen in the final quarter of the fiscal year that's still coming up. But largely, the number is going to exceed the budget by about the number you see there. That's really the only things I wanted to highlight on this, if there's no questions. I also wanted to point out, in particular, to Trustee Hatcher, she had asked about the IT expenses. So in your board packet, there are more details of the IT expenses over the last couple of years, as well as a chart showing our unrestricted and unallocated balance, our forecasted balance for the end of the fiscal year.
Is that in the green, the one we just got?
Yes.
Thank you.
And one other thing I'll mention, the deferred maintenance report, also at the request of Trustee Hatcher, we spent some time going over that with the facilities team. So that report has actually been removed from the financial report, and it's now going to be included in the facilities report. But it does contain financial information. So we get together and we ensure that they're using our information and their explanation. So it's just one single report now. Yes?
Thank you very much for those two things. I appreciate it, and I'll try to pay more attention. I also would like to point out that, because I mean, it's funny, but I don't feel as though when I look at that, that I have any discretionary ability to say whether it's good or not. And I'm a board member, and I'm responsible for the money, so I want to be able to understand that. That's what my questions were about. But I did want to highlight in your report the fact that the budget counts for about 25 vacancies, and we're up to 41. So that concerns me, is all.
Yeah, I think it concerns all of us. We would like to fill those vacancies. The 25 vacancies that we put in the budget are just, I would call, our normal attrition.
Exactly.
So over and above that, we need to be filling those positions, and we're looking to do so.
Are there any other questions of VP Barnes? Thank you. This is an action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for March 2022 as follows: General Fund, Deferred Maintenance Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investment All Funds. Do I hear a motion?
I'd move we receive these funds and accept the report.
And there's support. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Next, we're going to hear a facilities development report. EVP Johnson is stepping to the microphone to explain to us what it is we're dealing with. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I am here. Jim Beschi could not be here tonight, so President Blanca had asked me to pinch it for Jim. So be kind and gentle with me tonight. I'll start out with the M L and G L projects to give the board an update on that. Good news, we're about two months out. July 1 is the targeted completion date for both of those projects. And please report that both of those projects are on time and within budget. So we've about eight weeks to go. A few pictures to help kind of give a sense of completion.
I love the pictures, by the way. Pictures are my favorite part of it.
Oh, good. And I really have to thank Stenco, who's our contractor. As part of their work, they actually take pictures each day and put it out into the pro course.
Do you have like a time lapse camera going?
It would be, especially right now, we have about 12 different trades in G L, I mean, in M L, working as we speak. And so it is a snarl of activity, but all very well coordinated. We start out each week, just to point out, in our Tuesday morning meeting, with a safety report. There are safety inspections done throughout the week. Any things that need to have brought to attention, we talk through, we talk about how the contractors, the subcontractors are addressing that. As you might imagine, in a location such as this, as with the G L, because of how the G L project kind of encroaches on traffic, there are a lot of safety things that need to be put in place. So teams are doing a great, great job with that. So with that said, one of the key areas that is just beginning to have work is the new atrium floor, changing out the old tile floor to terrazzo floor. So they've torn up all the old tile. And terrazzo floor is a multi-phase process. You're doing the prep work, and then there's layers of terrazzo, which are little stone chips that were kind of custom-selected by the college to go with everything else. And what you're seeing here is there's, that shiny area is where they're starting to add the terrazzo in. They'll get to a point at the end, the end of this week, where it's all in, but not polished. Then, there's a lot of trades that are waiting to get access to that atrium to then start to do all the work up in the ceilings and the poles, and they'll be doing their final work the next two or three weeks, and then they'll come back and do the final polishing of the terrazzo floor. So about mid-May, that this atrium terrazzo floor will be complete. A very large part of the project is to replace the central roof system, which was a skylight system on both sides. The design was for energy efficiency, to go to just skylights on the northern face. And so what you see here is the outside structure of both that center skylight system and then the two porches, as I call it, the west and the east porches. And those structures are up, and you'll see in this next slide where we, this is kind of an interior view, where you see, where we took out a lot of the old skylights, we filled that in. And what's left are the old skylights, and panel by panel, when weather permits, because it all has to be done within a day, they take out the old panel and they put in the new one. So the left, you see all the old panels. On the right, you see a sample of what a new panel looks like. It's much brighter, it's less sectional. And so that's on the north face. And that's come nice, they'll be done within the week with the skylights. The board might recall, there was a significant investment in technology. The infrastructure for that, as led by Todd Kruger and his team, is about 16 million miles of cabling. And this is a good example of that. And you can see there's a lot of closets with cabling, it's running throughout the building. The cabling is largely done. We're in the last stages of the cabling. Now, we're putting in the terminals for cabling. Next step, as soon as the IT teams can get access to the building, is to start to install the equipment, which is going to start in the next couple of weeks. We're also in the finishing touches, we're starting to reassemble the ceiling. So the ceiling grids are going in, the light fixtures are going in, the ceiling grids are just about complete, the light fixtures are about 50% complete as we speak. And then our new terrace on the western side, the excavation- terrace on the western side. The excavation was done about three weeks ago, and now you see here pictures of forming. So they're starting to get ready to start pouring our new terrace on the western side. And then, last but not least, our HVAC systems. This was a massive project. They had to reopen the penthouses, build special ways to get all that equipment in. The equipment was here on time, was installed in time. The piping work, now the connections of all that HVAC equipment is just about done. And Siemens, who was our Building Automation Controls Company, they are in the process of installing their control panels, loading their software. And within the next couple of weeks, they're going to start the commissioning work of all of our HVAC system. So it's all going just as we would have hoped. I'll move now to the Great Lakes renovation. So this offers the Board perspective, kind of an aerial view. And you can see on the left, a little further distance, and then on the right, kind of what the footprint of that addition. The shiny roof is the new addition portion. You know, the structure is up, the metal girds are up. They're just about done completing the brick walling on it. And at the end of this week, on Saturday, they're going to be pouring the cement floor on the second floor. The following Saturday, they're going to be pouring the first floor. As you might imagine, the real magic is what's below the floor, right? So there's a lot of work going in of putting in the electrical and the drainage trenching, the plumbing trenching. That's all going as we speak to get ready for those pours. But it is right on schedule. So that concludes presentation. Any questions?
Trustee Devarti. A couple of the trustees said they really liked the pictures, and I like the pictures. I've had a number of people throughout the community asking me how this project is going. And I'm just wondering if it might be possible for our communications office to maybe post on a regular weekly basis, like maybe put what we're, the initial pictures of what we want, what we expect it to look like, the architectural renderings, and then a weekly update, what we're doing. This is really exciting. And this facility has been an area that people throughout the county come together and rely on for community events. And it just strikes me that having something on our website, on the front page, that could easily take somebody, and hopefully our communications people could do this, and kind of go through what you're going through. I think there are a lot of people in the community would be excited by this. And it really informs them about how we're using their taxpayer money. And I think it's an important communications tool that will build, and at the same time, will be communicating the reopening. As we do this every week, we're saying, we're getting one week closer, we're getting one week closer. And we're promoting the reopening of this facility that is used by community groups throughout the county. So I just, a suggestion. And I like the pictures, and I think there are a lot of people out there, a lot of our taxpayers, would like to see the progress we're making.
Very good. We certainly can work through President Blanca's direction. We certainly can create a microsite out on a website to show that progress.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good, comprehensive report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from trustees?
Chair Trumillican, I also wanted to share with the Board, VP Barnes mentioned that we now have integrated the Deferred Maintenance Financial Report into the Facilities Report. So this is the new and improved report. And basically, what we've done is taken the Facility Report that you've always seen, and we've added to it the financial numbers. So for each of the Deferred Maintenance Fund, and then you'll see on the third page, the bottom of the second and the third page, you'll see the Campus Fair Maintenance. You will see the total amount of funding that the Board has approved to be put into those two respective funds, the amount that's already been spent for projects completed, the amount that has currently been allocated for projects that are in progress, and then the balance. So you now have that financial information there. I'll just point out for the Board, if you look at Items 10, so I'm on the second page, Items 10, 12, and 13, campus flooring replacement, it's not a big dollar amount. We allocated $50,000 for it. What's important is that a few years back, we identified we need to make this annual. This isn't just a one-time event. There was a lot of flooring. So, for instance, right here, we went through and assessed all the classrooms in LA from a conditions perspective. And we are able to address a number of classrooms to improve the flooring. Now, when we do that, we also take that opportunity to freshen paint and lighting as needed. So our focus is now on an ongoing basis to have a flooring allowance. Item 12, the Board had approved a contract for parking lot lighting. That has been issued, that contract materials are here. We're just waiting for the contractor. It's now a matter of availability of resources. That's going to happen within the next month. And this is all the parking lots, parking lots five, six, and seven. And these are all new LED, energy efficient, and dark sky lighting fixtures. So we're very excited about that. And an important part of that is that we also took the opportunity to improve the electrical service out in, especially parking lot seven, because we needed to enhance that transformer. And we sized that transformer so that it can support a longer-term vision around electric charging stations, which we're working on a plan for that as we speak. And then, last but not least, campus service drive replacement. There's a board agenda item for that. And if the Board approves that, we will be moving quickly to start that project in mid-May to be done by the first week in July. Chair Trumillican, that ends my report.
Thank you. Any further questions of EVP Johnson?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much.
Good. Are there any remarks by members of the Board trustees? Trustee Hatcher.
At our last meeting, Dr. Kissel, yeah, you, mentioned Robert Greenleaf and servant leadership. And since it's Rose's birthday this month, I bought the pamphlet by Robert Greenleaf that started that movement of service leadership, and I'd like to give it to her as a birthday present.
Well, thank you so much. I have his book, but I don't have this pamphlet.
Oh, good.
I appreciate it.
The book's too expensive. I couldn't afford it.
I'd rather read this. Thank you so much.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. It's great getting younger every year. It does. Thank you.
Of course. Any other trustee remarks? President Blanca.
Yes, yes.
Your turn.
Okay, this is an exciting time, as you know, of the year. We're celebrating our students at Honors Convocation on May 19, and our commencement is May 21. And this year, it'll be in person. We're excited about that. But I just have to say, there's nothing like last year. To be able to see a family in a car, and just, there's just nothing like it. And to say to the family in the car how amazing that their student did, and just, there's nothing like it. So we'll be back in person, but I really am going to miss that great opportunity that we had to do that. And I don't know, maybe we'll have a parade or something sometime in the future. Where's Linda Blake? I didn't want her to fall over here. Also, in May, we have our Women's Celebration of Women's Leadership Month. You know, that is a scholarship luncheon that we have. And this year, we are recognizing the three women, outstanding women from our community, and it's virtual. Clea Patrick Caldwell, who's the professor and chair of the Department of Health Behavior and Health Education, the School of Public Health at the University of Michigan, and Yodit Mesvin Johnson, who is the CEO of Nonprofit Enterprises at Work, and Deceia Price, who's a Clinical Assistant of Social Work and School of Social Work at the University of Michigan. But this year, the Women's Council thought that this was a year to really recognize a person that has contributed so much to the community and so much to this college, that they created the first, the inaugural Women's Council Lifetime Service to Students Award. And I'm proud to say that it will be presented to trustee McKnight Morton in recognition of her work during her exceptional career and her 28 years and plus, you know, ongoing.
She started when she was 10, by the way.
As a WCC trustee to support our students and community at large. So I hope the trustees will join us at that event. And lastly, I would like to thank our faculty and staff for an amazing year. We had a great year. And everyone that works here, doesn't matter, I know I've said this before, but working through this is like crazy. I mean, it's the most unbelievable time, regardless of the role you have, because no one really knows what the right decision is, because there's nothing to fall back on. And it takes so much patience, and you really, truly have to know what you're doing, and you really have to care about the people that you work with and that you are teaching every day. So thank you to everyone for this year, this academic year. Just amazing. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. We have some old business in front of us, action items, the first of which is a resolution to recommend the allowable 2022-2023 velorem tax rate. And specifically, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees recommends that the college, when developing its FY 2023 budget, utilize the maximum allowable 2021-2022 add velorem rate for operations, which at its current rate of 3.3759 mils, will generate approximately $65,586 and $815 of gross tax revenue. Do I hear a motion?
Support, Devarti.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Trumillican?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
The motion stands approved. Thank you. Next, we have the service drive, aforementioned service drive replacement matter. The recommendation under tab F tonight is that the Board of Trustees approve the replacement contract with best in an amount not to exceed $368,285. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion and support. Is there any discussion?
When is this to begin? Did we find that out already?
In May. And finish in July, early July.
Paul's good?
Good.
Thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Trumillican?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
That motion is approved. Thank you. The next item in front of us, also an action item, recommendations for new programs. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the new programs for Fall 2022 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Devarti, support.
Motion and support. Is there any discussion on this tab G recommendation? Hearing none. Trustee Hatcher, excuse me.
Did we discuss at any point what enrollment projections are for these new programs? We did discuss it? Do we have any guesses, or?
Would you please come to the podium?
I'm sorry. I should have asked this last month, but you know.
You?
I'm sorry.
You have license.
I'm sorry. Specifically, the education one, remember, that's kind of more of a bridge program because of the changes that the state has made. So the projections to that program is probably the consistency of what we currently have in our education program. So we usually have about 30 to 40 students who are matriculating in that program. I think there could be some growth, but we're probably going to be impacted by the decrease in demand for people wanting to teach. So that one, I'm so sorry. And then the other ones were really programs where we think we would double enrollment because those certificates are smaller than those associate degrees. Those are programs that had enrollment, but not completers. So our guess is that we would see a large increase in the number of completers in those programs, because those are those smaller certificates.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Trumillican?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion stands approved. And next, we have 2022-2023 tuition and fee rate for credit classes. The recommendation under tab H in your agenda here is that for the 2022-2023 academic year, that the tuition rates and infrastructure fee be approved as submitted, and that all other college fees not listed would carry over from the 2021-2022 academic year. Do I hear such a motion?
Support.
So moved.
We have a motion and support from Trustee Hatcher. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Trumillican?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion stands approved. Next, new business, four discussion. First, WTMC contract renewal. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
WTMC's current five-year charter contract expires on June 30, 2022, this year. A new five-year charter contract renewal must be authorized by the WCC Board of Trustees for WTMC to continue to operate. The recommendation found tab I authorizes Chair Trumillican to sign a resolution that will allow for a new five-year renewal contract for WTMC. We've been renewing WTMC every five years since 1997. Slide, please. The Michigan school code allows WCC to charter WTMC, but with that right comes responsibility. There are four important functions that WCC performs. First and foremost, WCC's board selects the board of WTMC. As a matter of fact, tonight, at tab M, you'll be voting on three reappointments to the WTMC Board of Directors. The second function this board performs is issuing the contract itself. That is what created WTMC and keeps it operating every five years. Number three, this board, through its administration, provides oversight to WTMC in the areas of contractual and legal compliance, academic performance of the WTMC students, financial stewardship. And then finally, this board, the last function, is terminating and renewing the charter contract. Every five years, it's up for renewal. And heaven forbid, there's serious problems with the school, how it's operating, this board, you know, might have to make a decision to shut the school down.
So the other thing that, as a chartering institution, we have the 3% oversight fee. So the state of Michigan allows authorizers to collect up to 3% of the public So the state of Michigan allows authorizers to collect up to 3% of the public school revenue for the oversight responsibilities. Currently, WCC is collecting 3% of the Student Foundation allowance received from the state. We are not doing the special allowances like the special ed fee and the spring reduced lunch funding. This chart gives you an overview of the fees that have been collected since 2015 in three year increments. This contract that we're putting forward will increase the facilities use fee. We're proposing from $150,000, $150,000 a year to $175,000 a year. We can continue to do the 3% foundation fee. And as noted, as Dr. Colbert noted in his presentation, the $30,000 for the half lab aid. You can see the revenue from 2015 to the proposed 2023 has gone from 1.59, excuse me, $1,590,000 to approximately $2,166,000. Currently, WTMC has an enrollment target of 650 and is able to admit 675 to account for mid-year graduate departures. The enrollment capacity will remain the same for this proposed contract. Do you have any questions?
Trustee DeVarty?
So the facilities fee of $175,000, is that for every year for the, it's not going to go up? There's no, like, no escalation for Consumer Price Index or anything?
No. Because the 3% fee is going up each year, we're leaving the 175 at 175.
Any other questions? Thank you, AVP Blakey. Oh, trustee Hatcher.
It doesn't say anywhere in the contract that you're the contact person for the WTMC's interaction with the college. So there's nothing in the contract that, that stipulates a direct relationship of who's contacting whom?
Well, the contract does, in many sections, refer to the president or her designee, the board, and its designee.
President or designee.
Linda's been the designee for.
Okey dokey.
For at least.
I'm the designee.
You're the designee. Are you ever?
And a capable one at that. Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Larry. Next, on our agenda, video streaming hosting service contract, AVP Hearns. Welcome back.
I think I'm back here for two. So the video streaming hosting service is a replacement contract that did go out for RFP, and this is the video streaming service that we use to host our videos for our online courses. The nice thing about this new contract and a new service provider is that it has full integration with Blackboard. It allows the faculty to have their own individual accounts and channels, somewhat like you would do on YouTube, but behind somewhat of a firewall for us to integrate with Blackboard. And it also has a testing feature where there can be prompts added to the videos for assessment, and that integration is also, works well with Blackboard, our LMS system. So our recommendation is that the board approves a three-year contract with UJU not to exceed $98,485.
Thank you.
All right.
Let's move on to the next item.
All right. So tab K. So tab K is another replacement system. This is our library management and discovery system. And I think the two key points that we want to highlight about this contract is that we're replacing two separate software services, that's the backbone of the library system, and they're going to be integrated into one system, and it's also going to be cloud-based. So we won't have to worry about the hardware in regards to a server of those things that need to be replaced when we need to do upgrades to the software. And the recommendation is that the board approves the purchase of Exlibris, Alma, and Primo Library Management and Discovery System at a first cost for full migration and license fees not to exceed $142,000 for the 2223 academic year, with an annual renewal option up to four additional years or five years total for a total cost not to exceed $452,080.
Any questions on that? Trustee Hatcher?
The $452,000 is, for five years, is less than five years of $142,000. So is that a deal or what?
We're asking for approval to negotiate what the contract years would be on that, for that.
Okay, so it is a deal. Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, new business item is application for liquor licenses on four respective dates pertaining to the Ironworker Summer Conference, and AVP Tucker has all the information on that.
Good evening. After a two-year hiatus, we're excited to bring the ironworkers back to campus. This is a regular action item that we asked the board to approve, four separate events which are located in your packet in which the ironworkers will serve alcohol on campus.
Any questions about that from anybody? Everybody approve of alcoholic licensing, eh?
Well, our next board meeting isn't included.
Never is.
Okay.
I know. It's up with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
I can walk through.
We have an action item, as General Counsel Barkoff mentioned a minute ago, reappointment of Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Directors. The recommendation is that the WCC Board of Trustees approve the reappointments of Jan Ginsheimer, Derek Jackson, and Stuart White to the Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Directors with terms ending April 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And is there support?
Support.
And is there any discussion? Does trustee Landau have any comment to add?
I have served with all of these individuals, some for quite some time, Stu and Jan in particular, Derek's been on for the last few years, and all very solid, amazing contributors to the WTMC board, and I highly recommend them.
So you recommend we proceed?
I would, yeah.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
And congratulations to those three re-elected directors. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the 2021-2022 candidates for graduation. It's an action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the candidates for graduation as submitted. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And we have support. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
How many?
I am so pleased to announce that we have 1,907 candidates, who have graduated, which is up 11% from last year. They are, 1,036 certificates, up 24%, and 1,234 postgraduate degrees, which is up 11%.
Awesome.
Isn't it funny? Really.
Well presented. We don't even need a microphone for that reporting. That was very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
The candidates for graduation are approved. Thank you. Next, we have an honorary associate degree recipient. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees award the honorary associate degree in community service to Mr. Paul Crutco for his extraordinary support of Washtenaw Community College and its students, and for leading a life of service that has benefited our entire community. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And is there support?
I want to announce that I served on Paul Crutco's executive committee when he was first appointed at Ann Arbor Spark and enjoyed that time that I spent with him, but President Blanca continues to serve with him on his board. And before we take the vote, I thought maybe she would have some additional light to shed on Paul and his service.
Yes, I'd like, I'd love to. Paul began as a CEO of Spark in 2011 when I came on board. And as you know, Ann Arbor Spark is the economic driver for the Ann Arbor, Ypsilanti, Livingston region. And the amazing thing about Paul Crutco is that he has included Washtenaw Community College as an equal partner as he does University of Michigan, Eastern Michigan University, and Washtenaw Community College. He has us at every table. He, actually, Brandon and Michelle have worked with him and with Phil Santa to bring in training opportunities. And you know, we're really needed in this community because the one, for all the reasons, but especially in the area of economic development. And where Paul relies on us is that when he brings companies to determine whether or not they want to locate here, which is great for our community because it brings jobs, and he always invites us to meet with them, and that's how he values our college. So I'm pleased that the board has recommended Paul as a recipient of this acknowledgement. He has replaced Mike Finney. Rest in peace.
And AVP Hearns, I didn't mean to turn my back on you. Was there any additional information that you wanted to share with us in this regard? You're good? Okay. Thank you. So we've had discussion, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Paul Crutco is duly accorded that honor. Thank you, President Blanca. I would like now to entertain a motion to recess this monthly meeting and move into a closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement. Is there support for that?
Support.
And a second?
Second.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
So they're leaving.
That motion is passed, and the board would now ask that those of you here, the audience, staff and support staff, work your way outside of the auditorium so that we can have this closed session. If you'll stand by outside, we'll let you know just as soon as we can resume public session and call you back to join us. Thank you. I would now entertain a motion, welcome back, to reconvene the monthly meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion? We have them both. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now back in session. Before us is tab P in the agenda, and the recommendation here is that the Board of Trustees ratifies the proposed extension effective July 1, 2022, continuing through April 30, 2023, between AFSMI Local 1921 and the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion?
DeVarty moves. We accept this recommendation.
And support?
Support.
And we have support. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion's accepted. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting and open the public hearing on the 2022-2023 budget?
So moved.
And is there support? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The monthly meeting is adjourned, and the public hearing is now open, and the board will now hear comments. If anyone is here to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, and we'll limit your time accordingly. Anybody wish to speak to the Board of Trustees this evening? Seeing no public comment, that section now comes to a close. VP Barnes, could you come forward and begin the budget discussion for us, please?
Yes, good evening again. So the budget review that we're going to see right now is very similar to the numbers that you saw at the end of March at our board retreat. There's been only very minor changes, I would say immaterial changes to the numbers, just some minor movement between line items perhaps. We had hoped to have the final property tax numbers, but they are not available, so we're going ahead with our estimates for property taxes. Also, to note in your board package, in addition to this presentation that I'm going to go through with you, there's also a detailed analysis by line item, and so you'll be able to see any variances by line in the entire income statement for your, for your analysis. So with that, again, some of these charts you may have seen before, but I'll go through them again to refresh everyone on the, on the issues. So we're going to go through the budget process. I'll go through some of the highlights again, our revenue projections, our expenditures and operating transfer projections, as well as our financial statements, a snapshot of those. In terms of our budget process, this is the culmination of a six-month journey for finance. We start this process even further back in November. We then send the templates out to our departments in December. This year, we did ask, because we knew we were going to face cost pressures and so forth, we did ask the departments to collectively seek a million dollars in savings, which they attained and are in this budget. They finalized their budgets in early February, after which finance goes through, and we ensure that we understand what everybody is asking for, and we ensure that we know where we can get the funding to support it. We then go through a series of leadership reviews, including the budget retreat last month and culminating with this meeting here tonight, to review the entire budget with the Board of Trustees. In terms of the highlights that you're going to see in this presentation, this is a balanced budget. The trends are indicating that the credit hours may continue to fall, as you've seen in the budget retreat, by about 4.2%. I would note, however, that if you recall one of the charts that I showed, we are, even though that's what the trends indicate, we are bucking that trend, the overall community college trend, to a certain extent, that they've been falling at a rate of twice that much over the last couple of years and four times that much since 2015. So it is, it is, we're trying to mitigate it, and in fact, we've done a good job. Carl, you saw, presented WTMC tonight. That has helped us mitigate some of the credit hour decrease, as well as seeking out-of-state students to take our online courses have also helped mitigate that decrease. So that's why it's still falling a bit, but we're mitigating it to a large extent. Property taxes and state aid, this is a bright spot. We are expecting property taxes to increase this year. Our estimate is 3.3%, and you'll see that on an upcoming chart. And expenditures, you know, we do have the inflationary pressures, as we're going to talk about, that impact our structural cost. We do have some variable cost increases, but those variable cost increases have associated revenue, so the cost has associated revenue, which leads to a margin for the college. We also have some strategic initiatives that I'll go over as well later in the presentation. Our main revenue pillars, again, the decline in credit hours. Most of this happens in the fall and winter. Summer is actually quite stable for us, this summer included, the spring/summer 22, but also we're projecting more of the same for next summer. So we'll see some decline in the fall and winter. But property taxes, again, expected to increase by at least 3.3%, and we estimated that by looking at the inflation rate multiplier that the assessors office uses. State revenues, we're projecting a 2.5% increase. The governor's budget proposal actually calls for a 10% total increase, 5% one-time. The governor's budget proposal actually calls for a 10% total increase, 5% one-time, 5% ongoing. We expect the legislature to reduce that somewhat, and we looked back, of course, at the pre-COVID years, and the college typically received about 2% increase per year. So our projection is in line with that increase, historical increase. Some of the other revenue line items, these aren't our main pillars of revenue, but they do help, and they do have margins for the college. Revenue from our trade partnerships is going to increase by about 1.4 million. We've got the UA returning in person and other programs this year in person, so that should lead to increased revenue for the college. DML Building, of course, as you've heard much about, is reopening in July. That will result in facility rental revenue for us, and our workforce development revenue is also increasing by a couple of hundred thousand dollars. This graph, you will have seen in the budget retreat, but it summarizes where our revenues come from. And you'll see there the green area at the bottom of the chart. It's a slow, subtle decline in tuition and fee revenue over time, but that blue field, which is the local property tax revenue, is completely compensating that decline. The state taxes, which is represented by the yellow field, that's pretty steady over time, as you can see, and all other revenue, pretty stable with the exception of the COVID years, where we did have reductions in items such as the trade partnership revenue, for example. There's the tiny sliver of orange at the very top, which represents the tuition and fee increase that the board approved tonight. So that will eventually turn into the green field below, but we wanted to highlight that that's an extra 1.2 million dollars for the college next year. In terms of revenue detail, I would highlight that the tuition and fees at 29.5 million is the same as last year as budgeted revenue, and in fact, if you look at our current forecast, our current forecasted revenue is also 29.5 million dollars. So we're very much trying to maintain that level. But if you look back at fiscal year 19, that used to be about 30% of our total revenue, whereas now in the proposed budget, it's about 25% of our proposed revenue. So what's compensating that to a large extent is our local property taxes, which is a good thing, but it also makes us very subject to any swings in the property market. So this year, I'm not expecting any issues, of course, for fiscal year 23. Property values have still been rising. Inflation rate multiplier is good, but as interest rates rise typically, and you've seen mortgage rates rise, which eventually result in a softening of the housing market. So hopefully, it won't go down, but at a minimum, the rate of increase will go up, and we could actually experience a decrease in the future of property value. So it's just something we need to keep our eye on, not imminent. Expenditures and operating transfers, so 117 million dollars total. What I like to do here, too, is remove, for the sake of looking at how much our structural costs are increasing, remove the variable items, so the things associated with the trade partnerships, the conference center, and so on. If you disregard those items that are variable, our fixed costs are going up by 2.8%. So we've been trying to keep our cost increases below the rate of inflation to be fiscal, good fiscal stewards of the college. Generally, just to describe generally what's happening with the operational expenses and transfers, again, we're trying to keep our cost increases below the level of inflation. As I mentioned also, the college did find, and the departments very much supported, the identification of the $1 million in savings. Where did we find that? We found that in direct expenditure savings. We also looked at optimizing the sections that we teach, and we also are making an effort to put more money into preventative maintenance. So if you look at our preventative maintenance line, it's actually more expense, but our deferred maintenance line is actually less, much less expense. So we're investing more to prevent problems rather than spend money after the fact. The pull ahead of the Technology Infrastructure Fund that the board approved earlier this year, we had anticipated that we would be spending 1.5 million dollars in fiscal year 23, but given that the board allowed us to pull that ahead in order to order materials for our infrastructure plan, that results in a net savings for our fiscal year 23 budget. So that 1.5 million dollars actually helped. It's a great tailwind for us for fiscal year 23. The Health and Fitness Center, I've mentioned in the past, we are expecting the Health and Fitness Center to roughly break even this year, which is finally getting us back on track. And we're expecting that next year, about a half a million dollars of profit from the Health and Fitness Center. It's important to note, as you know, that the Health and Fitness Center has a debt outstanding that's going to be paid off in 2027. That bond payment is 1.2 million dollars approximately per year. So the half million dollars won't cover the bond payment. We'll have to cover the rest of that bond payment, but it is well on its way back to a good trajectory or a good result. The variable costs, I've discussed, I won't repeat. We are investing more in equipment. So as I mentioned last month at the retreats, we've, over the past couple of years, because of COVID, we've tightened our belt a bit, and we only spent what we really, really needed to spend. But it's been a couple of years, so we wanted to make sure that, in particular, the academic programs have the equipment they need, so they've gone through. EVP Hearns has gone through diligently with her team, looking for what we really need to spend for fiscal year 23 for the upcoming budgets. There is also some for other teams, but primarily, it's for academic areas. Utility costs have increased. Our water bill is going to go up, our fees are going to go up by 6% in the upcoming year, and our electric bill has also been higher due to the COVID mitigation efforts that we have, with the recirculation of air and ventilation and so forth, has increased our electric bills. Finally, and not least, inflation in general is going to have a material impact on our personnel costs, as well as other non-personnel costs not mentioned here in this list. This is just simply, this next chart is simply a different view of those same expenses. So you can see that most of our money is being spent, as it should be, in instruction and student support. So 73.5 million dollars we're spending in fiscal year 23 on those items, and that's reflective of the equipment, for example, increases, additional on-campus activities, which we're expecting as well. In terms of campus operation and administration, we've got the reopening of the ML Building, we've got support for the WCC Foundation, we've got the preventative maintenance, which I've mentioned, and utilities, which I've also mentioned. Trade partnerships, again, that's variable cost, I've covered that. And then this all-other line, I'll spend a moment explaining this all-other line. So you'll, one thing that's in here is our strategic initiatives. So our strategic initiatives include the electric battery lab that we're planning for our academic programs. It also includes a special initiative. We're trying to continue to attract more out-of-state students to our online programs. We've actually increased it quite a bit, and we're trying to further do that to help, again, stem the decline from local loss of high school graduates and so forth. And also Detroit Drives Degrees. The other thing I'll highlight, if you look at the fiscal year 22 column, the 1.2 million, it looks like a negative, which for an expense would imply kind of revenue. So what we do there, in addition to planning our vacancies and so forth, we tend to know that certain departments won't necessarily spend all their budget, so we anticipate that some of that will not be spent. So we put that in that line. But you'll notice in fiscal year 23, we haven't done that as much. And the reason we haven't done that as much is because of inflationary concerns, and also the fact that we asked the departments for a million dollars in savings, we're not expecting there to be a tremendous amount that falls to the bottom line, as has been the case in past years. So that's why you see that number. It's still a negative point one, but not what you've seen in past years. And in summary, in terms of the statement of activities or income statement, our revenues equal our expenses, of course, so the budget is balanced. And I'll also take a moment to explain our statement of net position, which is a balance sheet for the college. So I'll just explain some of the big movers. So the current assets, that line item is decreasing somewhat. Basically, we use cash, for example, to pay for our investments in the ML Building, as well as the Great Lakes Building. So instead of having debt, we use some of our cash. You see the current assets go down. Correspondingly, if you look at the capital assets line, that's going up, because we're investing a lot of our money into capital assets in our buildings for the campus. In terms of large liabilities, the pension and OPEB liability is by far the biggest liability on our balance sheet. You'll see that we're maintaining it exactly steady, and we're doing that, it's a little bit unpredictable, well, it's not a little bit, it's a lot unpredictable. It's a very complex calculation that is done by actuaries at the state level. But generally speaking, it has gone up every single year, with the exception of fiscal year 21. Fiscal year 21, it actually went down largely because we were getting a smaller proportion of the state's pension and OPEB liability. Going forward, though, we're, right now, one, because it's complex, but two, because interest rates are rising. When interest rates rise, pension liabilities can tend to fall. We can't, we don't know that for sure, but that's one of the key levers of an actuarial calculation, but is much more complex than that, so I don't want to oversimplify, but that's why we've kept it steady. And the other line item in liabilities, that's the bond that we have outstanding for the Health and Fitness Center. So you just simply see that declining with the bond payments that we make over time. Finally, I'll highlight the net position at the bottom. You see our net position going from 30 million dollars expected at the end of this fiscal year to 32 million dollars expected in the next fiscal year. So a good net position for the college. So in summary, I would say that the college is very fiscally sound. We do need to keep our eyes on enrollment. We do need to keep our eyes on inflation and be vigilant, but despite these challenges, we think we are on track to hit a balanced budget for the coming year. Any, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Are there any trustee questions regarding this proposed budget? Dr. Blanca?
I'm a trustee.
I was going to make an exception for you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want the board to know that we are not taking this enrollment decline trend lightly. I know Terry addressed that, but we have really, we've continued to look at ways to increase our enrollment. So it's not like, you know, we have to put that in this budget, but this is a topic, and actually, something we work on every single week in terms of increasing our enrollment opportunities, finding out what our students want, not the students who are here, the students that we want to attract as well, and getting them what they want. So trying our best better.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
You may have mentioned this, but what about our trade partnerships that we have? Has their, have they, has their monies increased to us of what they pay us? Has that increased, or has it stayed the same?
No, it's increased. We've had additional enrollments that help it increase, yes.
Through the ironworkers and?
Correct. The UA enrollment has increased to ironworkers, sprinkler fitters. We've had very good enrollment from the union partners.
I also, to that point, I want to remind the trustees that the UA invested into our plant with the Great Lakes investment that there was substantial, and that's going to become an asset of value to us going forward, and of course, it'll pay dividends to them as well, because it's investment in their future use of that facility. So I think our trade partners have been very good partners in terms of their willingness to put money on the table, not only for their training programs, but for investment in our capital here at the campus.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Now, my other question, if you don't mind?
Please, go ahead.
We're talking about the enrollment. How is it that we can increase it? I know you mentioned that you're working on it, but what is, can you just briefly recap with some of your thoughts and of how you can increase the enrollment? Because that, excuse me for saying it, because I know this is across the board in the state of Michigan, enrollment is really in retention, but how can we, our college, our school, do that?
Well, you know, I would be very happy to meet with trustees to share our enrollment and marketing strategies.
Okay.
You know, either individually or however, if you don't mind, resident at this point.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Because that is a concern, you know. We're talking about, we got to do this, but there's only so much we can do in increasing fees, and I don't want us to be like Jackson or some other schools, not targeting them out like that, but there's other schools that, you know, really targeting fees. And so we pride ourselves on keeping a low tuition, but, you know, we have to do something to offset some of the enrollment.
Well, let's defer that conversation. We can certainly get together and compare some notes on that. Trustee DeVardy?
That's good. Thank you.
I want to thank the president for offering that, and I would like to take advantage of that. I also want to point out that on the operational expense analysis, they specifically call out in the all-other line item, online strategy aimed to increase out-of-state online enrollment in Detroit Drives Degrees, which I think, so there's clear, clearly here that they're envisioning, as part of our expense, some investment in marketing to increase our enrollment. And so I see that you've built that into the budget to work in that direction, and I appreciate that.
Can you explain what Detroit Drives?
Detroit Drives Degrees?
What does it mean? Detroit Drives?
It's a special program. I don't know if I'm the best qualified person to explain.
Brendan, could you comment on that?
Sure.
And you've come forward. Thank you.
I meant to ask that, too. Thank you for coming. Sure.
So Detroit Drives Degrees has a new program called the Community College Collaborative, and it is an investment of initially 20 million dollars that would impact seven community colleges within our region. We are one of them, with a long-term goal of helping local communities with unique or innovative strategies to drive enrollment and success, in terms of them getting into a program and getting to work. So we've submitted a proposal, an initial work plan. We got some feedback on that work plan. We have another one due at the end of the month, in May, that would, by fall, they're going to make an announcement as to how much investment. They've essentially told all the community colleges that they are going to give money to strategies that would help drive enrollment, drive student success, and get people to jobs. So we created a unique kind of approach, and we would impact Ypsilanti, driving around 500 individuals, 350 would actually enroll over a three-year period in a high-wage, high-demand academic program or a short-term training program. Then at the end, they would be able to be competitive in the market for a job that's in demand and high-wage of at least 40,000 dollars a year. It is our math that if we do get funded, and the funding will be a few billion dollars more than likely, that those 350 people moving into a 40,000 dollar a year job would have a 14 million dollar economic impact to Ypsilanti from day one when they start working. So, and the goal of the program is to create a strategy that is sustainable, so that after that investment, now you've created a model that will have increased enrollment, completion, and job placement for years to come.
So the funding is from the state?
The funding is from two private foundations, the Ralph Wilson Foundation and the Palmer Group, who've allocated 20 million dollars initially, with the goal that if these models work in three years, that that funding would increase to 60 to 80 million over an additional five years.
That's wonderful.
And it will be leveraging state dollars, because all that money would be ensuring those students would have wraparound services to support them, whether that's coaching, advising, counseling, supportive services, but that advising, counseling, supportive services, but that the state would also kick in dollars to pay for tuition.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful.
And the electric vehicle lab?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we also submitted a grant for that of about, what, 2.5?
2.5 million, which was a special earmark.
So we looked at that, and we're also looking at, from the Thompson Foundation, hopefully, this would be like a dream come true, a semi-cybersecurity training that we could take to different communities. And who else? I don't know, but I'll tell you, this is one exciting place to be. I mean, it just really is. It just really is. So there, no one's, we're just, we're working real hard and loving it.
That's great.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes trustee Hatcher.
I just wanted to thank Terry Barnes for a very clear and comprehensive report. I don't know whether getting older makes me understand it more, but it was very clear, and I appreciated, some of your slides were, where you compared years and so forth, were very informative, and I just wanted to thank you for your hard work. I know it's fun, but it's also hard work.
Well, thank you. I have a great team, but thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Are there any members in the audience that wish to speak at this public hearing about the budget process? We welcome you to come forward. Are there any other trustee comments this evening? You all had your fill?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
And support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much.